Thank you. Good, good, good. Now if you ignore me, it's just because you're ignoring me.
Hello, everybody. All right, just testing out the mic. Can everyone hear me? Yes?
Hello?
Okay. All right. So before our selectmen's meeting tonight, we have a quick public hearing on... So I'm going to open a public hearing on the liquor license and extension of license privileges for Newcastle Inn Elizabeth and Carolyn Cook located at 60 River Road, Newcastle, Tax Map 12, Lot 49. So this is the section we open it up for public comment. Any questions regarding any changes to the... Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing part of the meeting. All right. It is 7:01. It is 7:01. I will call the September 13th Newcastle Board Selectmen's Meeting to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right. I'll start with amendments to the agenda, and I have a couple. I guess I just have one. We're going to add 7.6 under new business, fire company discussion, and this will be the section that we'll be discussing fire company, and that's all the comments regarding the fire company should wait until comments or questions should wait until that section of the meeting. So we'll move on to the minutes from August 23rd, 2021, and September 1st, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those?
Moved by Tor.
Seconded by Rob. Any discussion on the minutes?
I didn't see anything.
You got anything? Nope. All those in favor of approving the minutes? All right. Passes five to nothing. All right. Now we'll open it up to public comments, not on the agenda. Board requests that public comments are limited to five minutes per subject. Would you please step up to the microphone and state your name? Uh, no. Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity for public comment. My name is Linda Mercer, and my husband Jim and I reside at 98 West Old County Road. That's in the village of Sheepska. I'm here with questions and concerns about the current road work on the West Old County Road and to seek a better understanding of how road projects are planned and carried out. We have lived at this address for 25 years, during which time the road has been repaved twice with none of the impacts we're currently experiencing. I have walked my dogs on this road for 25 years, which has given me a great appreciation for the beauty of our surroundings. My specific comments on the West Old County Road work are the following, and this has to do with communication in part. There was no notification to residents on the road in advance of the work. The work was scheduled what's outlined last year by the road commissioner as a three-year project, starting with tree cutting the first year, culvert work the second year, and then repaving the third year. This has changed, I guess, to a two-year plan because most of the road work except the repaving has been done now. One huge concern is the amount of ditching and clearing of the road shoulders. It seems excessive for such a small dead-end road. There are now fairly deep ditches along several parts of the road where drainage does not appear to be a problem. For example, near the beginning of the road on the right-hand side and then just beyond the Chase Farm intersection on the left-hand side, there's some pretty deep ditches which could certainly cause a problem with cars passing, particularly in the winter when the roadbeds tend to get narrower. The shoulder work has resulted in some very steep banks along portions of the road which are resulting in erosion and have exposed additional tree roots. We have an incredible number of power outages on our road. I don't know why, but I'm really concerned that with the exposed tree roots, we're going to see a lot more trees coming down on the power lines. There was no silt or sedimentation control used during the project as required by state law until after all the work was done. There's now hay bales and sediment areas that have been put out there, kind of after the fact. Best management practices were not used during culvert replacement. Two ponds were drained during the culvert replacement, and the water levels have not returned to previous levels. While this was apparently allowable by state law, it had an impact on wildlife use cases and, most importantly, the one pond, the craw pond, has always been a source of water for firefighting in the area, and I think they'd be hard pressed to get a lot of water out of that pond at this point. It was stated that the larger culvert that was placed in that pond was needed to prevent road flooding. If my memory serves me, there has not been any flooding in that area since the last time the road was repaved, when the roadbed was raised. The culvert at the bottom of the hill to the west of our house does not appear to be working very well. This is a very low area which has flooded more recently, and one end of the culvert is completely submerged, and this area has, as I said, has flooded in the past. With such extensive road work, other road work, maybe this area should have been addressed during this project. Some culverts have yet to be replaced, and so the question is, will someone have to return at a later date to do that work? The extension of nature of this road work has led to a suspicion that plans may be in the works to join West and East Old County Road. For the record, I and many residents would strongly be opposed to that because of the financial burden to taxpayers, environmental impacts to the Deer Meadow Brook and the surrounding wetlands, and as well as the increased traffic that that road joining would undoubtedly cause. So what is the new width of the paved road going to be? The road commissioner informed me it would be no more than a foot. Is that still the case? Considerable work has been done beyond the previous end of the previous paved road. Is paving being extended and at what cost? A notification on the paving date, the road commissioner has stated on the website that updates will be posted as to the date of paving in the next couple of weeks. I think there must be a better way to notify us when that paving is going to take place than just putting it on the website, perhaps a notice in our mailboxes. The same update states that we will not be able to come or go on the road on the day of paving and that we are being told we'll have to park down at the community center if we need to go anywhere. I think that's not very feasible, and I'd like to see if they can change that to pave half the road at a time so at least cars can get around the paving equipment. There is a business on the street, and there are emergencies and things where people may have to get out. Finally, I'd like to know the cost of the road work to date, including the cutting of trees last fall, the cost of the culvert and shoulder work, and the cost of the paving. Also, we were told at one point that this year was just going to be a skim coat of paving with final paving next year due to cost overruns or funding issues. So I'd like to know if this is going to be the final paving this year or whether they'll be coming back next year. So anyway, thank you for your time, and we look forward to your responses.
Thank you. I've talked to the road commissioner about a few of these issues, but I'll make sure that we get this to him and we get some responses and answer some of your concerns. Yeah, thank you very much. Yep. Could you step up?
Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you. That's better. My name is Bonnie Rodamacher-Fliss, and I live at 24 Pine Ledge Drive, right next to Linda Mercer. And to be quite honest, I've never attended a town meeting and never really had a reason to until our road work began. And I, along with Linda, I joined late to the neighborhood, but have enjoyed walking along our road and the wildlife and all of that. And I'm not going to reiterate everything that Linda said. It is in my letter as well, but, you know, the key thing is I'm raising a child in this community who's very environmentally conscious, and she was devastated with the loss of our ponds. It was a source of pleasure for her. She was a big frog catcher and turtle hunter and that kind of thing, and to see these ponds drained for unknown reasons was extremely disturbing. I have some additional questions as far as what is the process of how these decisions are made, you know, which roads get repaired and when, and what's the cost? And what is the process for notifying the community who enjoys that area and lives on that road? Do we not have any say in what occurs on that road? The deep ditches that Linda's talking about really seem unnecessary. You know, I've been there nine years, and the only area that has flooded is the only area that was not improved, and we were told that it could not be improved because it would have cost too much to build the road up. So that area is still going to flood while all the other areas that were repaired and improved are areas that were never concerned. Are there plans that are laid out step by step when something like this gets approved? Is there a copy of the plans, and can the public view those copies? And is there a protocol for communicating this to the public? If there are no plans or written document, how are those who are performing the work held accountable if something goes wrong? How long ago were these plans approved for West Old County Road? And how much money was allotted and how much money has gone into it? I'm just wondering if these, you know, I appreciate that you say that some of these items are already, you know, being looked into, and I don't know whether a special meeting, you know, with the folks that this really concerns would be, you know, available to us, but I certainly would appreciate that. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks. All right. Any other public comments not on the agenda? Yep, yes, sir.
While we're on the Old County Road, I have a comment about the East Old County Road. The first hill you come to, which is, we sometimes refer to as Zeller Hill, is unsafe. If you go up Zeller Hill traveling down the road, the tar gets narrower as it gets to the top of the road. I don't think that it's even, it's barely enough room to, for two vehicles to pass. The school bus won't go down that road because it's unsafe. It's just a matter of cutting two or three trees down at the top of the hill and widening and widening the road so that it's safe. That's all I got to say.
Sorry, did I miss your name? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Tom Stevens. Oh, I should also mention that the reason why I have concern about this is that my son and his five children live on that road. They travel that road every day, and I travel that road once in a while, so it's not just...
Yeah. Thank you. Any other public comments, sir?
Hi. Ray Belfler, 470 North Newcastle Road. The new pavement is very nice. We have some safety concerns. A lot of people are traveling a lot faster on the road now. Maybe another speed limit sign. At nighttime in certain parts of the day, my wife and myself have been basically run off the road. Would it be possible to put a yellow line down the center? It's just a safety concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
The speed is your primary concern? And the...
Yeah. And people don't know where the middle of the road is anymore. At daytime, you can see the seam, but at nighttime, you can't see it, and it's hazardous.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
The fire pond, when that was drained, was the fire chief contacted about it? Who gave the okay to drain that? Those culverts could have been reset high enough to have five or six feet of water in that pond and not wash the road out. Now, on the Sheepska Cemetery, the back road through there, the contract says that the brush that sticks out in the road shall be kept clean. And among other things, if a branch falls off a tree, it's picked up and hauled out of there. Wasn't done last week, and by the way, they finally got over and mowed it, no thanks to you. And we're still waiting for the brush on the end of the road to be cut so you can see what's coming across the bridge without being rammed into, had to pull out in the road. Kind of a safety issue, and you seem to be ignoring it, Ms. Macy. And as far as the fire, let the fire department run themselves. It's gone well. This foolishness about a tank truck was spilling water, and she wanted to know why and wanted to know if there was going to be any draining so she could tell folks. Well, a tank truck is vented. When it gets full, the water slops and it comes out. That's the nature of the beast. Let the fire department run themselves. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business now, 7.1 Liquor License Newcastle Inn Elizabeth and Carolyn Cook located at 60 River Road, Newcastle, Tax Map 12, Lot 49. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a motion to approve the liquor license? Moved by Karen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Tor. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Did we check before if the owners are here?
Yep. The owners are here.
Okay. Is it... Do they want to, I guess, explain what... Do they want to explain what they're expanding so we can have better clarification?
Hi. I'm Carolyn Cook, Elizabeth. So essentially, right now, the liquor license covers the inn inside, so we are looking to expand that as well to the outside. We're also applying for the liquor license new because we are purchasing the inn.
Okay.
So beer and wine? Beer and wine.
Beer and wine.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Will we have them up here? No. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think the application was pretty clear showing where the outdoor area was.
Yep. So all those in favor of approving the liquor license?
Yep.
All right. Passes five to nothing. Okay. And now we have, move on to item 7.2, update on the pumpkin fest by Larry Sidler.
What do I do?
You wanted to give us an update?
Your other hat.
Can I cancel on the next meeting?
Okay. All right. We'll table it to the next meeting.
You got me on a little visit.
Okay. Okay. And then 7.3, October 11th, Holiday BOSS Meeting. Move the meeting date or... Move the meeting date or just hold off until the next meeting? I think that was the question that Sarah wanted to discuss. And I would say if we don't have anything pressing, we'll just skip it to the following meeting.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or we can have it on the next Monday if we want.
So then we'd have two meetings consecutively week after week then.
Yep.
Can we decide next meeting?
Yeah.
See if we need it.
Yeah. Let's see where we are.
So we'll just table it until then.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
All right. Moving on to 7.4, Lincoln County Budget Advisory Committee Caucus. I'll turn to Sarah for this.
Sure. This is just an update of our membership list for the Lincoln County Budget Advisory Committee. It previously included every board member, and we just need to update Wanda Wilcox's name to alternatively say David Levesque.
Okay. Yeah. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
Okay. So do I have a motion to amend the Lincoln County Budget Advisory Committee Caucus as presented? So moved by Tor. Do I have a second? Seconded by Rob. Any further discussion from the board? All right. All those in favor? Passes five to nothing. Okay. Moving on to 7.5, the broadband committee membership changes, and we'll turn to David Levesque.
So as I handed out my report for the broadband committee, and primarily what it does is update the membership of the committee. As you originally know, we were approved for a committee from last November, and the membership included Brian Foote and also Tom Duke. So since they're no longer with the town, we've reflected a different membership here. Additionally, it gives a status report of our activities and also lists the newly formed Damascada Broadband Committee that was recently approved by their select board. And what I'd like to do is ask for approval of that new list of committee, but also ask the select board to do what the Damascada Select Board did, is charge the committee with working with at least one or more communities in their broadband effort. And effectively, that's what we've started to do with Damascada by applying for the joint grant from the Main Community Foundation, working with Tidewater Telecom for a joint feasibility study, which, by the way, has recently started and should be completed by mid-October. And having that as a formal charge will certainly help us with future grant applications for funders that are looking to build community.
So we need to make a motion on both, on just the membership or on the...
I would move that we accept the proposed membership for the Newcastle Broadband Committee, and we charge the committee with collaborating with one or more communities in our broadband efforts.
Okay. Do I have a motion to...
Yep.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Rob. Any further discussion from the board? Questions? No?
That's great. That's great, though.
All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? All right. Passes five to nothing.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to item 7.6, the fire company discussion. And I'd just like to open this up from the boards that Tor and I and Sarah Macy were able to attend the meeting that the fire company held on September 11th, and were able to listen to the citizens that were there to speak and the fire company. I'd just like to clarify a couple of points before we get into the discussion aspect, and I'll be with you in just a second.
Can you just take a break as we have a statement?
Okay. Yep. So we, Tor Glenn Denning and I attended, and I just wanted to say that throughout the, since Clayton passed, the board has had a board of four. We were down a member. We had an election that was coming up where we had new membership that was going to be coming in. We had three seats up for election. Our town manager left for another job, so we shifted to an interim town manager, and now we've luckily been able to find a good town manager to hire. So throughout this time, we've had discussions, we started discussions with the fire company after the election. It was the boards thought to explore a slightly different model to be able to support firefighters and clarify the position of fire chief and fund it. So that was the reason behind the suggestion that the board had made at that point. After that point, we had a workshop with the fire company where they expressed that they did not want to move in that direction and move towards a fire department ordinance. We did receive an ordinance from the fire company. It was not the one presented last Saturday. We just, the first time I saw that ordinance was on Saturday at the meeting. In reviewing that ordinance and speaking with the attorney afterwards, I'm encouraged that the board and the fire company can work together to resolve this issue and come up with an agreement that works for everybody and satisfies all the needs and concerns that the fire company has in regards to this. So that is the status of where we're at and where we've been on the board. At this point, does anyone on the board have anything else they'd like to add to that at this point?
Yeah, I'd like to just say, as Joel said, we were at the meeting. I thought the fire department, fire company did a good job of presenting fact. I had no exception to what they presented the other day, and I thought they did a thorough job of that. So, you know, I've been thinking about this, and, you know, I think, I feel like it's too bad where we are. It's stressful. I think everybody is exhausted. I think Jake, at the end of the presentation, you made a good statement, which is, we need more dialogue. So I've been thinking where, you know, where did the train get off the tracks? It's been a bumpy road. I think Joel explained it from the board's side that we haven't exactly had consistent leadership through this last six months, just with the changing of guards on our board, town manager. But I felt like the last time that we were at a place where we were communicating was at the July 12th meeting where we had a workshop, and we had two trustees and interim fire chief, and we sat down at a table and we had a discussion. I think everybody left that table feeling like we could come to some kind of resolution, and we were working towards something. Personally, I'd like to get back to that point. I think there's finger pointing on both sides of this football, and I think we all need to take responsibility, come back to the table, and have productive conversation, and I'm committed to that. I want to see this worked out because we're all... I want to see this worked out because we're all, we're all here as Newcastle residents. Thank you.
All right, so I'd just like to open, I'll get to you in a second. I just want to open up this to the public, just a few, just a few things to mention before we get into it. Again, like at the, at the meeting on September 11th, the fire company held, if we could keep conversations civil, keep from yelling, keep from accusations, and again, just have a productive, productive dialogue, ask questions, make comments, and it will help the process move a lot smoother. So with that, I'm going to open it up to the public. Again, try and keep your comments on the briefish side, just because we have so many people here. Anyone who wants to speak, I want to give them the opportunity. So Jake, would you like to?
Thanks. Jake Abbott? I live on 89 Academy Hill Road and I'm a captain of the fire department. Thanks for attending the meeting on Saturday. I do agree it was a good civil dialogue and a good factual presentation. Part of what I think needs to just be clarified is this discussion started prior to, but continued through attacks, a voter-approved budget in June, right? That voter-approved budget included the position of a fire chief and the funding that goes along with that. Our starting point for all of our discussions was, yes, we'd like to work on an ordinance, but yes, we need leadership. And to us, the answer of why that was never put into place is yet to be answered. And that's what's driving most of our conversation, is why. We're happy to talk about the full-time position, to work through that, but as was presented on Saturday, this department wasn't structured to operate without that. We've all stepped up to the plate to try to make that work, but we've got some deficits right now, right? And that's not what the residents of Newcastle have approved and asked for. So that's why we pushed on that. That's why we're here today. I will share that the ordinance that we presented on Saturday was shared prior to Saturday. It may not have made it to everybody, but it was shared. Another question that I'd like to ask is, why was the discussion to switch from a full-time position of a fire chief to a part-time fire chief, had an executive session without public comment and conversation? You know, that to me, as a firefighter and a member of this community that's worked my butt off to do this work for years, stinks of deception. And call it what it is, but people want to know the answer to that. So that's what I have to start with. It's a lot of whys and there's a lot of frustration. I don't think it needs to continue, but we deserve some answers to those whys.
I'll just respond quickly to the executive session. By nature of the executive session, there are no decisions made in executive session and there was no decision made that day. It was, it was a discussion point that was, was sent back to the fire company. At that point, tensions had risen and we were trying to create, we were trying to create a situation that we could adequately fund the position and continue the dialogue moving forward. That was the intention of the, of the board. However it was interpreted, was not meant to be that, but there were, there were some clarifications that I think the board was looking for on that. But I think this is something that, again, can be discussed in a, in a workshop or with the, with the company.
So the budget has already been approved for this year? So it is adequately funded already?
Pardon what?
The budget for this fiscal year has already been approved?
Yes, it has.
So it has been adequately funded already?
Um...
Right?
Not necessarily. That's, that's something that we'd have to get into in the details. There's, let me just step back to the, give a little bit more of a backstory, okay? When this, when this position was, when the, when the change was made for a full-time chief in the, in the, at the Selective Meeting in 2009, it was a budget, it was a budget line item. That budget line item was a change to thirty-five, thirty-five thousand dollars a year and explicitly said with no benefits. The, you don't need to pass those out, Jake.
I have them.
Yeah. So, part of, part of the dialogue that the board was trying to bring up when we first mentioned the idea of shifting to a town department was to, was to officially create this position, was to officially create this job, which has changed from a thirty-five thousand dollar allotment with no benefits to something that someone can actually, could actually live off of. I'm not, not suggesting that that was where we were trying to go back to, but there, there are many lines in our budget. There's, there's a, there's a pay line and then there's a benefits line. And the previous chiefs, without getting into too many details, the previous chiefs didn't take certain benefits that would be offered to a full-time employee. So that is not actually in the budget because we hadn't had this discussion, we hadn't gotten to this point. Chief Huntley died while we were in the midst of this, of this budget season and it didn't, we didn't have time to amend that. So that's part of the discussion that we were trying to have with the town department model and a lot of the, to, to answer, to officially create the position, job description, and make it, make it, make it what it, what it should have been, you know, all along as a position, voted on and, and created, officially created.
So for example, you know, we have a line item for, for example, we have a line item in our budget for a town manager. That doesn't mean that that is the salary that our new town manager was paid. There's a negotiation and a discussion between, you know, the town and the candidate that defines those things. Just, just because there's a line item in a budget doesn't mean that that, the town doesn't want us to spend every penny we have. We want to spend it in a prudent way. So that's how, that's how positions, salaried positions get defined. Okay. I thank you for the explanation. Part of what I think is just important to point out is that the position was changed prior to any conversations with public. The position was changed and then later, it felt like to save face, a stipend was thrown out there to say, hey, we can make something work versus conversation. This department has gone through a lot of transition this year and a lot of people are doing a lot of work and that's the way that it should be. But to make major changes in a system like this, we feel very strongly requires community input.
All right, any other comments, questions? That's a thumbs down. Norm?
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. This is an important issue to me. Around 1986, we had some people working on our house on the backside scraping paint. They set the house on fire. And if it wasn't for the fast action of the Newcastle Fire Department, my house would have burned down. So I want to say again, thank you Fire Department. You did a wonderful job and you didn't wreck my office, too bad. But I see no need to question the value of a fire chief. It's more, we are more of a need of a fire chief here than we are of a town manager. It's much more important. If you, if you want to cut your budget, say so, you want to cut your budget, but make, make it where it's most effective. Now, there's five of you here, sitting up here. There's no reason why you couldn't break up the work that the town manager does between all five of you. That's how we used to do it. But I do understand that you do have a lot of work to do and it's important work. So please, keep the fire chief's position with the fire department and you can handle it as you like, but he should be the head of the team and he should be with them at all times. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Yes, sir? Oh, it's Norman. Hi, Norman.
Hi, I'm Norman Halden, live up in 213. I really don't understand what the problem is. I've been a citizen of Newcastle for 79 years. I've been a member of the fire department. I run a business in the area. I understand duties, responsibilities, managing payroll. I don't understand what the problem is. Why are we talking about, what are we talking about? A part-time fire chief? A part-time fire chief is not good enough. I had a business in Princeton, Maine. Had a fire one night. Called the fire department. In the morning, I woke up, looked like a light on the mill. I went down, down to the mill to see what was going on. There was a little fire going in, in a blowpipe. I didn't know whether to go get my fire truck or call the fire company. So I thought, well, safety first. I'll call the fire company. Just down the road, quarter of a mile, I could see it. Thought, that'd be better to go get my fire truck. Fire truck shows up, they packed the truck. Doesn't work. Didn't work last week either. They lost the house. They come at my place, packed the truck. I was out working, trying to get things done and all of a sudden the flame was up the Why don't you put water on it? Fire truck doesn't work. We'll call Woodland. I'll call Woodland. I did. Woodland said, yeah, we're on standby. We won't come unless the fire chief calls us. We said, we'll pay for it. No. We called Callis. Callis got there and like calling somebody in bath after the fire's going. Listen, we can't afford to mess around with trying to save twenty thousand, fifty thousand. When you talk to the insurance companies like I do and they talk about, this type of fire company, you can cost you a lot of money doing the fire company, unless they can save you a lot of money, the fire company. What are we sitting here and talking about? What's more important to addressing this issue right head-on? Every citizen, every landlord in this town benefits by the proper decision. You're going to get what you pay for. Do we want something like Princeton? Do we want to be in a community that has great service, systems, helping one another? And when Paul Lehman got up here last Saturday and told us how important it is, I don't think anyone here understands the duties and responsibilities of a chief leading this great fire company. What are we talking about? I don't understand it. I wish somebody, I like to say, keep it simple, stupid. What's the issue? Let's talk about the issue. Are we trying to save fifty thousand dollars? Are we trying to, are we trying to let, let this fire company be the fire company they've always been with a good, strong leader and encourage people to come to this town because we have a good fire department? I wish I had a clear, can somebody just give me a clear answer what the question is? What are we, what are we here discussing tonight? What are we here discussing? Can somebody answer that for me, please?
We're, we're giving the citizens a, we're giving the citizens a chance to, we're, we're giving the citizens a chance to respond and ask questions, which is what you just...
We don't know the question. Ask question about what? We could sit and discuss for three weeks about something, but I think we ought to know what, what, keep it simple, stupid. What's the question? What's the issue? Let's talk about it. Get past that one.
Yeah.
Now, if you're talking about a half, part-time fire chief, let me, let me, let's go up behind the shed here and talk this thing over a little bit. We, we need a full-time fire chief and we need it as soon as we can get it. Whose house is going to go, what's going to go wrong because we aren't making decisions properly on time? I don't understand this. Only going to understand this, Newcastle chased me out of town, they don't want me to have business in the town. Maybe now I understand why I didn't come to town.
Thank you, Norman.
Since Chief Huntley became sick, the deputy chief took over his position. He has a full-time job and he also had help from other members of the company to keep things going, but we're still far behind. I'm, I'm sorry, Tom Stevens, 40-year member of the fire company. And, lost my train of thought. I guess what this really all boils down to is that the fire company hired a lawyer for a few thousand dollars to draft a proposed ordinance and the fire company would like to see an ordinance so that the chief's position is secure. The way it is now, you could say, okay, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna let you be full-time fire chief. Everything's fine. What's going to happen next year? What's, I mean, when somebody takes a job, they'd like to know that there's some security in it. So it really needs to basically have an ordinance and we were hoping that the selectmen would call a special town meeting to pass this ordinance. And, you know, it may come to the fire company having to do a petition drive in order to have you guys have a special town meeting.
So I would just, I would just like to respond to the, to the ordinance that, that again, in, when I saw the, when I saw the ordinance on, on Saturday and I discussed it with the, with the lawyer who helped draft it up, we had a, we had a good, just quick discussion going over some of the details and I'd like to continue that discussion and work through it so that, again, this isn't just something that has the support of the fire company, but it has the support of the fire company, the Board of Selectmen, the town, and the entire voting, voting public of the town. So I think that's the, I think that's the path that we, we've, we would like to, we would like to take and that was, again, the purpose of proposing the department model that other towns have, have used when they've moved to a full-time fire chief to define that role, to define that position, to provide the security. And that was the intent from the onset.
So in the meantime, the interim chiefs is kind of in limbo. I mean, how long is it going to take to do an ordinance, to do... I mean, how long is it gonna take to do an ordinance, to do a special town meeting?
Because we've been discussing since May, September.
Yep. No, and we'd like to do that. I think that's the... It should be the takeaway tonight, is that we need to continue this discussion. We need to work and get the details hashed out together so that everyone's on the same page and have meaningful dialogue back and forth and get this done. So, that's the plan.
Norman?
I still don't understand. It looks to me like the fire company is in 100% agreement as a team to go forward to the plan. What is there in that plan that we, as the select people, are saying we gotta discuss this more? What is it in that plan? They are in agreement. They are in agreement. And I, of course, as a taxpayer and a businessperson and a person who lived in this town for 79 years and been a member of the fire company, I trust their good judgment. I don't understand. What is it that you don't like about what they're asking you to do? What is it? Tell me. Tell us. Make it simple. Keep it simple. If you can't keep it simple, stupid, then you're up to playing politics like we're dealing with the virus in this country.
Norman?
Keep it simple. What is it you disagree with what they have proposed to you? Tell me one thing.
We didn't say we disagreed with anything, Norman. It's just there has to be a discussion.
If you agree, why discuss? I don't discuss the end of my management. If we agree, if we disagree, then we discuss.
We just received this. We saw this was distributed on Saturday. Some of us were there, and so they shared it with us, so we've just seen this for the first time. So we need to have, to look at it, look at the implications of each of the items on it, so we have to have a time to do that.
Yeah, but what is it about that thing that you disagree on right now? What do you disagree with what they're proposing?
I haven't studied it, and I have to have our town attorney study it.
How many buildings are gonna lose work? How's this fire department gonna fall apart? How much more? Well, you're deciding what you're gonna do. How long is it gonna take? I wanna know as a citizen. How long is this gonna take? This is important to me. My business, my home, my assets, worked all my life for, at stake. We need a strong fire department, more important than anything else. We can get by a bad road for a while. Weak fire department can really raise hell with our personal assets and everything I've worked for in my life. How long is it gonna take? How many meetings?
I don't... No, Norman.
You don't trust the fire company? You don't trust the fire company?
I did not say that. Thank you, Norman.
Yeah, I just... Mr. Hunt, I just, I think I'm optimistic that it's a short process. I mean, I wouldn't put a date on it, or one or two or three meetings, but, I mean, I think this can be hammered out, and I'm optimistic that we can do it swiftly and efficiently and figure out the details. But I don't think this is the place tonight to do it. I just, we just, we haven't had time to review it, and I think we need to sit down... Excuse me?
Jim Kahler, 96th Lewisville Road, fire member for 28 years, I'm the president of the board of directors. There's a couple of questions I just wanted to ask. Thank you for attending our meeting Saturday, and thank you for ever being with the town for attending and for your passion for the subject. There was a couple of questions. Merle had brought up something on the retirement benefits through the state, and right now that has been funded for administrative only. I just wanted to follow up with that. And there was a question about the timing, how much time the chief spent on administrative stuff. And we have a document we use, and we passed this back in 2009. I'd like to share with you at this time. But some of the stuff this goes through is maintain our training and attendance records for each member, pay our bills, submit incident reports, fire prevention, fire investigation, meet with our vendors, does maintenance on all vehicles, and takes vehicles to be maintained and do it in-house, maintains all our portable equipment, including hose testing. Shorthanded on weekdays, most of our towns are, our chief is able to respond and help out and get quick response based on that because he is here all the time. Run errands for supplies, set up training, set up meetings. He helps citizens with inspections, review building projects, work with other town positions to ensure fire safety on all town projects as well. Grant and donation management. He's able to be available to residents to answer questions and hear concerns. He does burn permits, even though we can do them online now. Some people don't wanna pay the $7. They do come in and they wanna talk to the chief every once in a while anyway, so that was a reason to come in, see him. Attend weekday meetings, answer phone calls and emails, attend weekday training sessions. A lot of our EMS-type trainings, in case you tell you I've talked to them before, all of our EMS trainings are during the day. And as a full-time employee, having a full-time job, I can't get out of it all the time to go to these trainings. That allows our chief to be fully trained to train us. Big thing, too, is our recruitment and retention is difficult these days. Having a full-time chief has allowed our members to focus on training and respond to emergencies for which they signed up to do. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Mike Clark. I live at 80 River Road, right across the street here. So I'm in a front row seat with the fire company and watched it for a long time. I, you know, I assume we all echo the sentiments that have been expressed about the company, the importance of the company, and the commitment of the members. And I just wanna call out, I guess, it's a question, I think, for all of us. How can we get back to a place of trust? I feel like we've lost that, and maybe we're kinda arguing over content and over perceived... I don't know. Like, I think we're worried that somebody else has an agenda, and that people are dancing around that or something, and maybe that's the case. I don't know. I wonder if we can, what it will take to rebuild trust. I think the fire company obviously is deeply committed, and this has been a vulnerable time with the loss of Chief Huntley, and a really painful time. And, you know, as you discharge your duties to, you know, to do your due diligence as our, you know, representatives and handling money and everything, I never begrudge an official for trying to do their job well. You know, we need to respect that. But this is sensitive, and, you know, obviously, we've, you guys hit something that's pretty sensitive in our community, and I just, I guess I'm just trying to ask us all, what can we do to rebuild trust? If it's a process that has to be worked through that we just don't get because we just thought it worked fine, like it was. I don't know if there's a way to distill that, to Norm's point, you know? What's the problem? You know, what can that be distilled clearly and without anything hidden or whatever, just so we can know that, okay, we are on the same page. There just may be some regulatory issue, or there may be, you know, a governance issue or something that, you know, does need to be addressed, and it just, we just sort of winged it before or something, and now, but we need to do this. But I would go on record as saying, I think the fire company has something special. I think this unique mix of a paid, full-time chief who can be secure in his or her position is necessary and worth protecting, and it might be a weird marriage with a volunteer company. I don't know. I was trying to read through some of the regulatory stuff. I still think it's worth preserving, and there's something very, very special here that's been built, and we don't wanna lose it. You don't wanna lose it. So I just encourage us all to see if we can find trust in this process.
Thank you. One of the things the board has discussed and has put out to the fire company is to mediator in a workshop to facilitate that. I think that, I hear what you're saying, Mike, and I think that that might be a step that would be really helpful.
I joined the fire department, I think it was around 1982 or '83. At that time, Paul Bryant was the fire chief. He runs the Riverside Old Company down here. And he was fire chief for the next six years that I was there. In the last two or three years that he was chief, he tried to get out of the job because it was just taking too much time away from his business. He wanted Chief Huntley to take over the position at that time, and Chief Huntley wanted Paul Bryant to stay on as chief. And they couldn't come to an agreement on that, so they had an election, and I was elected chief for one year. And then Chief Huntley became chief, and I was relieved that he was the chief because I, too, have a business that I need to run, and I couldn't do... It's on you. If you're a part-time chief, you're still a full-time chief. It's on your mind all day long. I mean, you don't just check out and you're not chief anymore. And the other thing that Jim Kahler, I think you forgot to mention, of the things that the chief does is he's in command at all the fire calls 24/7.
Thank you, Tom. All right, Casey?
Casey Stevens. I just wanna touch on Dr. Clark's, talking about the trust. The fire company has had issues with select boards in the past. The select boards change, as you know, quite frequently, but we don't. So we have to explain this several times, over and over, it seems like, and it's very wearing, like you mentioned before, the stressful, the exhausting. That's why we have come up with this ordinance. And this ordinance, I think, will solve a lot of the trust problems because new select boards that come in will know exactly how the program works. The fire company will know how the program works. There won't be any more back and forth and back and forth. This is why we have to have this ordinance to continue. And I mean that when I say it. We have to have this ordinance because we're not gonna do this again.
Casey, I agree with your sentiment exactly. I know that there's a lot of things in town government and in protocols that if they're not clearly defined and written and laid out, things can get lost in the cracks. Oh, I just broke the microphone. Things can get lost in the cracks. Things can get confused, and people can come onto boards with agendas to have an ax to grind, and that's not a fair, that's not a fair place to put anybody, especially with an employment issue, which is why the clarity of this and defining it and creating it as an official, as an official job title is what we've been discussing. And I think that, again, there was, there's been a breakdown in communication, and I'm looking forward to working together to come up with, come up with this ordinance and clarify all of the points on it so that the town is comfortable, the fire company's comfortable. We can build a stronger, a stronger department through the town understanding all the nuances of it and fully supporting. So that's our hope, and that's what we're, you know, the board is planning to do moving
Can I just, I just wanna add that I'm hoping when we get through this, it doesn't stop at the end of an ordinance. And like you say, these seats are changing. We had three seats up for election in June, and we didn't know who was gonna be sitting up here. So I get it, you know, you're long-term, and this is moving up here. It would be nice to have some kind of way to learn more, and I know the doors are always open here. I gotta say, unfortunately, I know more about this fire company over the last three months, maybe, than I thought I would have. And it's not the great way to learn, but I'm learning everything each time we talk, which is awesome. But, you know, the next people, the next round of selectmen that sit up here, we gotta keep consistency of having a relationship that's ongoing and positive. And I don't know how that is gonna work or what that means, but I agree. This doesn't work where, you know, every time there's a changing of the guards, you gotta worry about what's coming down, you know, in policy.
So I just wanted to mention that we'd like to have a special town meeting set at the next selectmen's meeting. I'm getting worn real thin. We're all getting worn real thin. I think we can come to get everything settled by then. So we really hope that on the agenda at the next selectmen's meeting is to set a special town meeting to vote on this ordinance in the Warren.
Casey, can I just ask a question? Are you saying that you're not open to any discussion on this ordinance?
I'm saying we'll be happy to meet with whoever at the town between now and then to get things sorted out, but we'll have it sorted out by then. Great.
Okay. Great. All right. Moving on. Thank you very much, everybody, and thank you for your comments, your discussion. It's very helpful.
Joel, when do we want to set up a time for this?
We'll talk about it.
Just, okay, we'll email or something then.
What do we have? We have the town warrant.
Town warrant.
Town manager's report.
Town manager's report. Say, do you want to talk about the work?
I don't know.
out, so if there are conversations that are being had, please, please go outside and continue conversations. We just need to finish our, finish our meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Let me fire up the computer. All right. Moving on to Town Manager Report and Communication. Is there anything you want to go over, Sarah?
Yes, I have a few things for the Town Manager's Report. I wanted to update everyone. There was a question brought up at the last board meeting about an invoice from Hagar Enterprises for approximately forty-five thousand that didn't have an architect's signature. Usually all of those invoices do have an architect's signature. I reached out to our Road Commissioner, who said that this specific one did not, because it was a five percent retainer closing out on the Academy Hill construction project, so that's what that was for. Secondly, I've submitted an updated version of Newcastle's comprehensive plan to the State of Maine Municipal Planning Assistance Program for final review. I'll let everyone know if we hear anything regarding further edits needed, but overall, I wanted to give compliments to the Comprehensive Planning Committee, who have been working on this for years. It's really a beautiful plan, and I'm glad that it has reached this point. We are in the process of posting all town policies on our website. This was not previously done. We've had all town ordinances, so we're slowly adding more and more. This is listed under ordinances and policies. Hagar Enterprises is wrapping up this summer's construction on West Old County Road. This past week, they hydro-seated the banks as an erosion control measure, and will be applying a layer of pavement in the coming weeks. They'll finish up paving next year. Our plowing contract has officially begun for the season on September one, which you'll see noted on the warrant this week. Last week, a meeting was held between myself, Dam Roscata Town Manager Matt Luckis, and Harbor Committee Chair Mike Hurst last week to discuss the future of the Harbor Master position. Our current Harbor Master Paul's planning on retiring after this season, and Newcastle and Dam Roscata will be collaborating to create a job description and hire for the position. We're working on drafting a job description presently that'll run by Newcastle's Harbor Committee once it's complete, and Matt will present the same to Dam Roscata's committee. The hiring process, however, won't begin until winter, and I will keep everyone posted as this progresses. This past week, Jody in Town Hall helped me to gather quotes from fuel companies in the area for all municipal buildings' fuel service, and we've ultimately signed a year-long contract with Dead River, who offered us the lowest rate at two thirty-three per gallon. I've scheduled repairs with Kinsel Crow Builders for the exterior of the fire station. They'll be coming in October and will be reaching out to us regarding a date specifically to repair all damaged siding and to replace a door frame on the side of the building that's rusted. I touched base with our Road Commissioner Seth, who said that they will be coming by to repair the stairs and railing before winter, that was damaged last winter as well. And that's that.
It's always depressing when we start doing the plowing payments.
I know.
It's like, it still feels like summer, and you're already paying for the, you're already doing the plowing, and you're just like, oh.
A little melancholy.
It is coming, but, all right, thank you very much.
Joel, can I ask a question of, Sarah, is, did you get the sense that it's typical for the retainer portion of the construction bill to be paid without the architecture signature?
Yes.
As a rule, of course, it seems like the architect would sign off on the completion of the project anyway, so it seems.
Because they signed off on all individual invoices, it wasn't necessary to have an architect's signature. This was just a five percent retainer that was paid, that is basically set aside until the project is complete and then is paid at closeout. So for all of the work that was done for Academy Hill, we do have architect's signatures for every itemized piece that was completed. But for a retainer, it's not necessary to have an architect's signature. It would be kind of redundant, in a sense.
At the, at the end of the project, there was a, there was a list that the architect put together, and all those issues were taken care of, so.
Why isn't that distributed at that time?
I think there was one.
It was just, it seems like there was a lag between that approval of the completion of the project and them submitting that last invoice.
Yeah.
I mean, we did, we did get an accounting of the closeout.
Yeah. And that's why, that's why we reached out. It was something that I couldn't remember at the, at that meeting, and then it dawned on me what it was, because of the amount. It made sense, so that's all that was.
One, one last item. There was a main water line leak this past week by the intersection near Town Hall that the Water District and Hagar Enterprises also worked to mitigate. I believe it was early last week, so that's all set.
That wasn't up, that wasn't up the hill, though.
It was right near where the, where the crosswalk sign got knocked down.
Oh, all right.
Sarah, do we have an update on the light at the base of Academy Hill, the crosswalk?
They are waiting for the signs to come in and are back-ordered, so I will let you know when, when the crosswalk signs come in. They ordered them a while ago, but I think it'll still be likely at least eight weeks before they arrive, unfortunately. A lot of construction signs are back-ordered these days, unfortunately.
A lot of everything is.
Yeah, everything is.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Anyone else have any questions for Sarah? All right. Moving on to the town warrant for seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Karen, seconded by Rob. Any discussion on the warrant?
Yeah, I have one, just a question about the tree clearing, the Aspen, the Aspen, is that a specific charge, or is that, it says annual operations, is that a frequent payment? I guess I'm just curious what, because there's another charge in here by another.
Where are you at?
On the page one, top of the page one.
Tor, I'll have to, I'll have to reach out to Seth and get back to you on the specifics of that.
Right, yeah, because there's one other. The Joey Winchambach one has a tree. Yeah, that's the one. Winchambach's got a tree charge there too for clearing. So I'm just wondering if they were, one was specific and one was just operational.
I'll find out for you.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the town warrant for seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight, seventy-five? All right, passes five to nothing. And then that's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Moved by Tor. Do I have a second? Seconded by Rob. All those in favor, passes five to nothing. We are done.
Do you have more than just this?